Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the Reno County Commission Meeting for July 26. As usual, we'll start with a pledge of allegiance and then a prayer by Pastor Rashawn Austin from First Baptist Church.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you would, please pray with me. Lord and Heavenly Father, we thank you for another day in which we can take the time to recognize you as our Lord and Savior, as God who is sovereign, as God who has taken the time to reveal himself through creation, through his son, Jesus Christ, through the scriptures, and through those who have called upon your name for salvation. We thank you for this group of leaders, influencers, people who have been tasked with stewarding resources. As I comb through their agenda a little bit, they have decisions to make, budgets to understand, and things to implement with housing, and helping to bring about change in the lives of young people who have made maybe some unhealthy decisions, whether by their own doing or by circumstances out of their control, and as they're working through roads and different things that they have to manage. I thank you for wisdom beyond their years, that they can be patient with one another, take the time to work through the pieces they need to work through with principle and compassion and courage, that they may steward the positions of influence and power that they have in a way that honors you and that is for the good of all that they are responsible for and to. What a beautiful thing it is to have the privilege and the responsibility of leadership. I thank you for their faithfulness and their commitment, their professionalism, and their time that they use to go about the business of stewarding the resources that are put before them. What a good, gracious, and kind and loving God you are. We thank you for your mercies, your grace, and the great salvation that you afforded us through your son, Jesus Christ. God the Father, God the Son, and God the Holy Spirit, it is in your mighty and precious name that we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Austin. Again, welcome, everybody, to our meeting today. Is there anyone here for public comment for items not on the agenda today? Hearing none. Does the commission have any additions?
The agenda?
I have none.
No.
Randy?
No.
Okay. So we'll move to the consent agenda. Randy, do you have any initial comments on this?
I don't have any on this unless there's questions.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion, but then I have questions. I'd move that we, well, no, I'd rather not make the motion for the consent agenda today.
Okay. You wanting to pull something out or vote on it separately?
Well, I think everybody knows that I've been concerned about the money going into the new shooting range project, and I feel like that the design build contract will just be the start of substantial dollars, and I'm not going to vote for that, so.
Okay.
Just wanted to explain that. Then on item 6G, Randy, I don't know if you can talk to this issue, but in the discussion of 6G on the used equipment from Foley, with the trade-in, it seemed like we could get the new one for the same price. We just have to wait longer, and it just seemed like to me that new is better than used even with a warranty. Is there any knowledge there on your behalf to speak to that?
I would probably need to ask Megan on that one.
Anybody else notice that in the discussion there, that I believe we can buy a new one minus the trade-in for the same amount of money as the used one with a guarantee?
But I saw that the warranty was basically the same, and the hours were very few.
That's true. Just bringing that up for... And Commissioner Hurst, I think you are right, that the used one doesn't have a lot of hours, and it does appear to be in the same warranty, so maybe that doesn't make a difference.
I hear what you're saying, but if it wasn't been for the very, very low hours, hardly at all, that with the same warranty, why, and the fact that you could get this, evidently it appeared to me that they really needed this quick, and so from that standpoint, I don't know that waiting six months to a year, for the fact that the information that we have with data on this 2022 CAT, I was okay with it myself.
Okay, thank you. So, Mr. Chairman, I would make the motion that we approve items 6A through 6G, and then vote on 6H separately.
Okay. There's a motion, is there a second?
I was second.
Commissioner Hurst, seconds. Any other discussion on A through G? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Hurst?
Yes.
Mr. Sellers?
Yes.
Mr. Friesen?
Yes. So we have 6H. I'll make the motion to approve 6H so we can have a discussion if there's anything else you'd like to add, Commissioner Sellers. Is there a second on 6H?
You moved to approve, did you?
Yes.
Yes, I was second.
So there's a motion and a second. Do you have any other comments?
My only other comment is, in voting against this, I have no problem with the Hutton group, I have a problem with what we're doing out there with county money.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Well, I share some of your concerns with the expenses involved, but I also believe that due to circumstances and the opportunity to provide this type of facility, and the ability to put it together at that location, and the need for that, to me warrants a planning and design feature to look at, to be able to see what the true cost is going to be and the true benefits are going to be for not only our sheriff's department, but I think it could save some travel time and manpower time later on down the line with regard to the facility training, as well as the opportunity to bring in some other area or regional departments. From my understanding of this, I want to be as conservative, or I don't like, as tight, okay, as possible, Ron Eagle will understand that, but I think it's something that, due to circumstances, it was not brought on by the county, that we need to proceed to look at this, and the only way to know for sure where we're at is to proceed with the design and design build characteristics, and be able to really see what it will do. And several things came out of that meeting with Hutton and the other contractors with regards to the building and the building capabilities and the use, and maybe even the future use for other emergency services, such as we saw over in El Dorado at Butler County's facilities. I thought when Randy and I attended over there, we got kind of a tour and explanation of how they put that together and why, and I think that offers some opportunities that we need to look at anyway, and so the only way to do that is to start out with the design build characteristics.
I noted in our agenda item, there was a group of staff that recommended this, including, well, you were on it, Commissioner Hurst.
I was, and it was a very good, we had, was there four, Randy?
Yes.
Four different contractors, or I want to say architect contractors, how do I want to say that, Randy? Anyway, we had four people with no how, and I thought they all presented past projects that they've done, and got a layman's point of view of how different ones were done, and I think what we looked at, what was presented for us to look at by the sheriff's department, was very practical in that standpoint compared to some of the others that we saw, and even facilities like Celine County that I remember that I thought was pretty elaborate, and I don't know whether that makes it more...
Yeah, and it was good to see the proposed awardee here, the contractor indicated that they were willing to offer assistance to find grant opportunities for the project as well.
I thought that was tremendous, the only ones that did that, and have that ability and that knowledge from that company, that individual within the company, could make a huge difference.
Yeah, so that was good. Sheriff, you're welcome to comment if you want, don't have to.
Good morning, Darren Campbell, Sheriff Reno County. I think Commissioner Hurst kind of hit the nail on the head. Hutton just kind of stood out amongst all the design build teams that we talked to, the four of them, as far as practical and being able to be scalable, so they're going to shoot us a project, and then we can scale it to fit our needs and our budgets. So this isn't something that we're looking to shoot the moon with or anything like that. It's an important piece, a training facility, that could be implemented and provide numerous agencies throughout the region opportunities.
Thank you for that. I think to Commissioner Hurst's point, and I think you've committed to this too, of just continuing to communicate with us and the community on all of the collaboration and, you know, benefits this will provide not only to Reno County but other agencies, and I think we'll continue to look forward to hearing on how this is a regional effort, not just the sheriff's office.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
In my standing, if we had any other opportunities to utilize some facility that did the same thing, that we needed to do the same thing as the sheriff pointed out, then I would certainly want to look at those, but in looking at all the opportunities, I can't find something that will do the needs and be available as this project might.
Last call for comments.
Well, I'm not disagreeing with what either of you say or the sheriff. I just recall that when the old range was dissolved and so forth, I remember in those meetings that we were told that what we would be looking at would be very minimal and very inexpensive, and I just see this moving towards a different realm, and the only way I can control that within my own thoughts is to say, I remember that meeting, and this is not going in that direction, and so I'm not upset with the fact that you two want to continue with this at all.
Hearing no further comments, roll call, please.
Mr. Hurst?
Yes.
Mr. Sellers?
No.
Mr. Friesen?
Yes. Motion passed 2 to 0, 2 to 1, sorry. Okay, moving on to business items, first up 7A, we have Jackson, Jackson, are you here? Carrie is here with the Reno County Entrepreneur Ecosystem Partnership Action Plan Presentation. Welcome.
Welcome, thank you. Hello. Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Carrie Mayhew, Director of Strategic Initiatives at Hutchinson Community Foundation, and I'm here today on behalf of the Reno County Entrepreneur Ecosystem Partnership, or RCEP, to share progress and updates on our 2020 to 2025 Reno County Entrepreneurship Action Plan.
Excuse me, could you adjust your mic just a little bit?
A little closer, okay. I'm also got some allergies going on, so.
I think it may just be a volume thing.
Yeah, you all sound quiet back there, too, so, okay. Reno County funds this plan primarily through its support of Startup Hutch, as well as the Hutchinson Reno County Chamber of Commerce and Greater Hutch as a close partner in this work. Thank you to Commissioners Hurst and Friesen for participating in the original Entrepreneurship Task Force that created the foundation and relationships that we continue to build on through RCEP. And I do have several other RCEP members with me here today, Jackson Swer, David Ducart, and Michelle Inskeep. So RCEP began in late 2017 as the Entrepreneurship Task Force and set this vision and mission with the belief that our authentic legacy of innovation and entrepreneurship, the desire to take the future of our community into our own hands, and the necessity to rewrite the narrative of Reno County as a place where we invest in our own people and places amidst the closure of outside-owned corporations like Target, JCPenney, and Eaton. We defined the local economic ecosystem by five core parts: mentoring, networking, education, incubation, and funding. We believed that if each part was strong in what it offered to entrepreneurs, we would achieve our vision of an inclusive ecosystem that inspires and supports innovators for a thriving economy. We completed a strengths and gap assessment, entrepreneur survey, and entrepreneur town hall in 2018 that informed the five-year action plan that has since driven our work and advocacy. One of our key learnings early on was how closely the strength of the ecosystem was tied to the strength of the relationships among ecosystem partners. The ecosystem is interdependent, and it takes all of us and more to make entrepreneurship possible, relying on each other's capacity, knowledge, and resources. A core function of RCEP is to continually strengthen relationships among ecosystem partners as we meet quarterly to assess and evaluate the health of the local entrepreneurial ecosystem on how well it is working to meet the partnership's vision and mission, and advocate for needed The action plan centers around three core leverage points: collaboration and navigation, strategic communications, and mentoring. To date, our key interventions have been: rebranding the Quest Center for Entrepreneurs into Startup Hutch to clarify their role in the ecosystem; advocating for the hiring of an entrepreneur at Navigator at Startup Hutch as a starting point to spark the entrepreneurial spirit, increase the entrepreneur pipeline, and connect resource partners and entrepreneurs; engaging in strategic communications to highlight our community as friendly and welcoming to entrepreneurs and innovators; and creating diverse opportunities for current and potential entrepreneurs to connect, build quality networks, and learn from and alongside one In 2021, we repeated our learning process from 2018 to observe how or if the ecosystem had changed since our initial interventions. One promising finding from the report was a respondent's significant increase in quality of life perceptions of Reno County. This included a 13% increase in overall perceptions of quality of life, and a 23% increase in perceptions of economic opportunity in Reno County, suggesting that ongoing efforts from the Chamber and Startup Hutch to celebrate the stories of local entrepreneurs are working to improve the narrative about Hutchinson and Reno County as welcoming places to do business. And small businesses are growing. We saw that 67% are expecting to gain headcount in the next one to two years, 95% expect an increase in sales, 93% expect to expand their facilities. We also saw an increase in entrepreneurs reaching out to Startup Hutch and the Hutch Chamber, a decrease in need for assistance with connecting to other entrepreneurs, and a lower overall level of future assistance needed compared with 2018. We interpret these data points to mean RCEP's efforts to improve awareness about resources, create opportunities for connections, and navigate resources are working. But in addition, we have learned there are still gaps to address in our ecosystem. Key needs going forward include assistance with marketing and access to venture capital. Marketing remains the top current and future need for entrepreneurs despite efforts by Startup Hutch and the Chamber to provide learning opportunities. Follow-up conversations with survey participants suggested that there is a need for continuous learning about marketing because technology and trends change so rapidly. Startup Hutch has recently launched an innovative marketing skills program, Project Connected, in partnership with the Fox Tratt, the new media arts studio in downtown Hutchinson, and that's just gotten started. The increased need for venture capital requires further study, so RCEP can determine how to best connect local entrepreneurs to the capital they need. This may also suggest that there are sufficient resources available through traditional lending models, and that an exploration of other creative lending models may be worthwhile. And finally, many businesses who currently rent are looking to purchase property, suggesting a continued need for resources to renovate buildings or to build new commercial spaces for purchase. So as you consider 2023 budget requests, remember that your support of Startup Hutch and the Hutch Chamber makes continued progress on this action plan possible. As we move into the last half of this five-year action plan, RCEP is exploring future funding strategies around developing a holistic economic development plan that includes a strong entrepreneurial ecosystem as a key strategy for overall local economic growth. So thank you for your time and your interest in RCEP's work and research, and we hope that you will take the opportunity to read the full action plan and report in your packet, and myself or my colleagues are happy to answer any questions you have.
Thanks, Carrie. Questions for Carrie?
Yeah, Carrie, thank you for your report and the graphs and data that you provided My question is not meant to be negative or concerning, but I'm wondering with the advent of Startup Hutch and the progress that it's made, it seems like some of the data that you just presented and some of the requests for continuing funding are very similar to what we heard from Startup Hutch and so forth. It is, you know, there's so many things that need to be done in the community, is there a need for this RCEP to continue their discussions?
Good question. So this action plan and this report supports the requests from Startup Hutch and the Hutch Chamber, so this is not an additional request?
I understand that.
Okay.
It just seems like you're in some ways duplicating what the Chamber is providing and what Startup Hutch is providing for the community.
You want me to get that one since it's on you?
Sure, yeah, sure.
Hi, I'm Jackson Swer, Entrepreneur Navigator, Startup Hutch. So, no, I understand, I understand what you, I understand the question, Ron, I think.
Negative of the presentation, I just, Carrie only has so much time in her...
I understand. So I think that the function of the RCEP is to try to get all of the partners together in the same room quarterly, and so it, correct if I'm wrong, when it was just the task force, we're meeting monthly?
Yes.
So when the action plan was originally being developed, it was meeting monthly. The group is now meeting quarterly. I think that's reasonable to try to keep people connected. I do think it's a valid question to put to the group, to the RCEP, how often does this group need to meet in order to continue to serve this function of keeping the partners within the ecosystem connected? But that function is important, and not a function that Startup Hutch or the Chamber can do independently. I mean, we can meet with each other, I can meet with Deborah, but to get the multiple partners within the ecosystem together in the same room regularly to talk about what we're doing is important to our ability to collaborate well and to not duplicate services. Okay, so that's just, and the Community Foundation does an excellent job of convening that as a neutral partner who is able to bring us all together.
And I do think that when we get to the end of this action plan, we will revisit what's the purpose and ongoing use of RCEP, but right now it does serve that purpose at the systems level.
Thank you for your answer.
I have one question.
Yes.
One of your main points up there was outreach. How are you outreach? How are you doing outreach? I figured Jackson had to come and answer that.
All right, thanks, Ron. So we do outreach in kind of through two primary channels. We are on, online is the biggest one, obviously, and so we have a variety of different strategies to reach out to people online through social media. We also do some things through Google, so if you search "online, I want to start a business" and you're in Reno County, I hope you get an ad, you should get served an ad to link over to us. And then we also, so Startup Hutch is a member of the Haven Chamber of Commerce, so we try to regularly attend some of their meetings, talk to the folks over in Bueller Economic Development, so the second avenue is really just... So the second avenue is really just interpersonal relationships, so just try to be on the phone with folks, go out to visit folks when we can. Was out in Nickerson last week, maybe two weeks ago, talking to Peggy, the mayor over there, so. And I know I have a, I have a standing offer to run around your part of the county, Ron, to go visit with some folks out there, too, so I want to take you up on that. So, that, does that answer the question about how, kind of how the outreach works?
It, it does. My, you know, having a little bit of sales background.
Right.
I, the social media and all of that works, but you have to have a personal relationship for that social media and those telephone calls to really work. So, I would certainly encourage an opportunity to go out to the communities and, for instance, go speak with the, I wrote this down here, Pretty Prairie has a citizens chat group.
Okay. Do you know when they meet?
And, you know, you, you learn about these things by going out to the communities. You don't have to go out every week, but every once in a while, you have to go out to those communities in order to make yourself known. And, and there's some cheap media out there, still call newspapers, but the weekly newspapers, you know, a small little deal in there, doesn't cost hardly anything. But it puts your name out there, and it makes people understand that Startup Hutch, just because it has Hutch in the name, doesn't mean it's not for the whole county.
Thank you for saying that, Ron. I think that's important that people, people understand that.
I questioned the name, but that's all right.
Well, yeah, that was, and that was a much debated issue, as, as you know.
But, but I think, nonetheless, it, it really says the point of what you're trying to do. And, but the knowledge that, hey, we covered the whole county, and, and so I would certainly, if you're free on August 22nd at 7:30 PM, then I would be more than happy to.
August 22nd at 7:30 PM, all right, I'll make a note, Ron.
Take, take you down, and, and I haven't even called them, but I'm sure they'd be interested in, in having you learn about the citizens chat group in Pretty Prairie.
All right.
And the Economic Development Group, Haven and Bueller. We've had a great working relationship, and you do have, with the Bueller Chamber and the Bueller Economic Development Group.
Well, wouldn't you know, Ron.
Those kind of things can be accelerated over the other areas, and because they have a commercial kitchen down at Pretty Prairie.
I know, I saw an article about that recently.
But anyway, that's, I.
Thank you, thank you, Ron. I know you're, you're the.
Just trying to get you to outreach, okay?
I, I, I hear you, Ron. I'm, I'm here for that, and I, I'm happy to have the escort. I know this is, that's your, your part of the county, and you're very well-connected out there, too, so, and I appreciate, I know that you, I still get referrals that I know are, that I know are coming through you.
I gave you two last week.
Yes, so thank you for that.
And I want to thank Russ Reiner for saying the same thing that I told this individual.
Yes.
And so.
I think we just, I think if we're thinking of the same guy, I think we just met with him last night.
It's so important that, that, that people ask, in fact, I'm going to cover one thing right now, that just shows that communication, that somebody knows you, and they call you, and you refer it on, is just recently, and you probably saw it somewhere, if not in the Chamber of Commerce information that they just sent out, was one person called me, and it could have been you or someone else, that said, hey, the Kansas Ag Expo might be looking for a place. Well, that phone call came from a neighboring county, individual that used to have a business here that moved out of county just across the line. And so I relayed that on to the Chamber. They got right on it, visited with, timing was right, these things don't always happen, okay? The timing was right, talked to the state fair, they wanted to visit. It made it happen here for, for 2023 and 2024. The Kansas Ag Expo will be in Hutchinson, it's a state park area. So it's just that type of being out there and people know who you are, that you don't have to travel all the time, as long as they know who you are, and, you know, so that's why I questioned the outreach, okay?
Very good, appreciate it, Ron. And I am free on the 22nd, so you can count on that. All right.
Carrie and Jackson, thank you, as always. You know, I certainly believe in this effort. I think, you know, to the extent we can continue to leverage all of the free volunteer work from RCEP, we should. It sounds like, you know, they continue to be a, a very good resource for Jackson and his work, and so I appreciate you guys continuing to keep that momentum, especially the Community Foundation's interest and, and involvement and sharing of, of, you know, expensive resources that you have limited supply of, so thank you for, for that work. I, I continue to believe in, in, in the work that you're doing. I, I think we're, we're kind of, we're getting towards the halfway point or so where we ought to double down on efforts to really show returns on our investment. I know it's really hard, and I know we've, we've, we're playing the long game here, and it takes time to show results. And I do believe we're in a, a niche part of, of Reno County's economy that, that the Chamber will have trouble navigating when it has so many bigger projects on its plate. So, certainly believe in the efforts of, you know, taking the people that live here and pay taxes here and incentivizing and supporting their efforts to, to grow a local business. And so, I, in a lot of ways, the amount of money we spend on economic development, you know, putting that at risk for, for example, one company that's, you know, isn't rooted here versus the limited amount of funding we're putting towards rooting local entrepreneurs, I think, is, is well within a reasonable level here. And so, I, I frankly would like to continue to see more of our money, economic development money focused on those that want to live here and do live here. And so, appreciate all the efforts you're doing and certainly support it, and thank you for your report this morning. Okay, 7B is, is the joint venture agreement that we spoke about last week. Randy or Patrick, do you want to provide a briefing on that?
Sure. Do you want, should I sit at the podium, or may I sit here?
You're, you can, you got a microphone.
Thank you, Commissioners. Last week, we had a presentation from Clint Nelson with Interfaith, and I see he's here if there are questions. He was presenting on the opportunity they think they have to do a, some remediation on an environmental issue at 500 West 20th, which is referred to often as the St. Elizabeth's Hospital property. That property is pretty clearly a blighted property and has some, I believe, asbestos issues and some other things that they think they can, they have a chance to get a grant from the EPA to clean up. Reno County has an interest in remediating blight because it, blight does affect us in terms of economic development and housing and other things that this commission is trying to improve. As part of, but it was presented that Interfaith, in order to be eligible to receive this grant, the property needed to be owned by a government entity such as Reno County. So, at the direction of the commission, I drafted, well, Interfaith's helped also, but we, we together worked on an agreement. And the main, the main focus of it is, Interfaith would deed the property to Reno County, Reno County would return it to them immediately upon either them, either Interfaith, either the grant being denied by EPA, so if the project didn't move forward, we'd give it back to them immediately, or as soon as it was a point in the project where ownership of, of the building, the land, no longer needed to be in the county and could be back to Interfaith, we'll, we would immediately return it to them. And then, in addition to manage the county's risk in being involved in this, the agreement says that we'll be a, Reno County will be an additional insured on Interfaith policy. It also says that we will either get a separate policy or a rider to our existing liability policy so that we have the same coverage for this project as we have for all of our other liability and that's inherent in running a government, so we have the same coverage. And it also says that in the event there's a claim that has a deductible event, Interfaith will reimburse Reno County for paying that deductible. Those are kind of my notes on the pertinent part. It was presented that there was a time-sensitive element to this, so we tried to hear about last week and trying to get something before you Commissioners for consideration this week, and I can now answer questions, and also Clint Nelson with Interfaith could probably answer some of the questions if it's about the property itself.
So, Patrick, you're happy with the agreement as you and Clint have written it at this point?
I am. I mean, any project that you take, that the county undertakes, we can't ever completely with certainty get rid of 100% risk. The only way to get rid of every possible risk is to not do anything, but I feel like, as written, Interfaith stands in front of us, and then they are providing, you know, their finances, and they're going to make sure that we have the same coverage we have for, that we would have on anything else. So I am, yeah, satisfied with it.
To me, this contract that was presented to us answers any questions I have. And mine was among fact that, that we're not out here for any financial obligation, and so it's answered my questions very well, written.
I appreciate you getting done so quickly with Interfaith. Shows that we can move here at the county quickly. And I don't have any questions on the contract.
Patrick, I, I looked at the contract, one thing, I guess I was expecting, but maybe it's just addressed in multiple line items kind of separately, is, is an indemnification clause.
Yeah, I believe it's in there.
Yeah, maybe I missed it. Maybe this document isn't searchable.
Yeah.
I'm not finding. I think it is searchable. Well, I'll tell you what, in an effort to get this moving forward, what I might recommend, what, what I would do is, is make a motion to approve the contract, subject to final review of indemnity clauses required by county staff, and allow that to be approved by you if it's needed.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Sellers, any final discussion? Hearing non-roll call, please.
Commissioner Hurst.
Yes.
Commissioner Sellers.
Yes.
Commissioner Friesen.
Yes. For once I said my piece, it was quick.
Good work.
Clint, did you want to say something?
Well, that was, excuse me, Clint Nelson, Interfaith Housing and Community Services. I was prepared to, but you gentlemen made it very easy this morning. So I will just take an opportunity to voice my appreciation. On behalf of Interfaith, I do think this is, you know, a step to seeing a positive outcome for that property and the community. So I appreciate the Commissioners and, and working with Patrick and Randy. All of my experience so far with this group, you guys are very open and forward-thinking about, you know, finding solutions to some issues in the community, so I appreciate you. Thank you.
Clint, while you're there, could you update us on what steps your organization's taken for the ARPA money that you've been given, subject to contracts that haven't been signed yet?
Yeah, absolutely. So, strategy at this point, we do have, are working directly with SCET on what will likely be Project One, a larger rehab here in town, here in Hutchinson. And Jeff Thompson is Interfaith staff member, he's our general contractor, Class A license, he's been out meeting with, I believe so far, Nickerson, and had some communications with Bueller. So we're at that point of identifying what the individual communities deem as their priorities, and then moving ahead with that work. I, I do believe we'll have a couple of projects completed to report on before the end of this year. Of course, once we have memorandums in place and, and have access to the funding. But early '23, we, we should be fired up and ready to start doing work in multiple communities.
Thank you. Thanks, Clint. I, I just wanted, I wanted to make a comment on this, appreciate the creativity on working on, on, on an issue here that's obviously been a, a blighted property and maybe, maybe a challenge for your organization for some time, and so.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate you moving forward on that. I also continue to encourage our staff and your staff to work with the city of Hutch, given it's, it's within the city and they have some opportunity to benefit as well. I know they weren't at the time as interested in supporting this for whatever reason, but, but I'm sure, I'm sure they can see the value here, so I would continue to encourage involvement and cooperation with them. So, thank you.
Yes, sir, understood. Thank you.
Next up is the Appraisers. Annual Report, Michael Plank. Mike, do you go, you go by Mike or Michael?
Both.
Both. What do you prefer?
Mike's fine, yeah.
Okay. Welcome.
Yeah, thank you. Well, good morning. I'm Mike Plank, Director of Appraisal, and I'll just kind of get right into the annual update here. After analyzing over 2,000 residential sales for validation last year, 2022 is on pace to have more than 1,900 sales, so about the same amount as we had last year. On average, the county validates somewhere between 40% to 50% of the sales that come in. These sales are the ones that we use in valuation as comp sales at the end of the year. Sales are validated according to the definition of fair market value found in KSA 79503A. As you can see on the chart up there, the average sales price for residential property countywide increased by just over 8% last year. Throughout the first half of 2022, we have seen another 12% increase in the average sales price from 2021. Despite the rise in mortgage interest rates since March of '22, the current real estate market continues to drive up residential value here in Reno County. Relatively speaking, inventory is low and demand is still high. Depending on what the Fed does with the interest rates and how the local economy and housing market reacts, it could make valuation tricky for next year if sales slow and prices drop in the second half of this year. We have also received an updated cost database from the Kansas Department of Revenue, the Property Valuation Division, also known as PVD. With the rise in inflation over the last nine months, our cost tables have increased an average of 14% this year. This will affect both commercial and residential appraisals in the upcoming valuation cycle. Reno County does not typically have enough valid commercial sales to develop a comparison sales approach, so we typically use the cost approach to value our commercial property here in the county. If data to support an income approach to value is available, then we will use that information to determine a value. Overall, the staff in the Appraiser Office continues to serve the county competently and efficiently. In addition to our sales load, the staff annually works through the state-mandated 17% review, which consists of approximately 6,200 parcels per year that must be physically inspected. There are also additional miscellaneous permits that we must inspect. The Appraiser's Office also updates ownership when deeds are filed, handles splits and combinations of parcels for tax purposes, as well as personal property renditions, which in Kansas includes oil and gas wells. The Appraiser's Office also conducts property value equalization appeals every spring, as well as payment under protest appeals during the winter. Despite the rise in valuations in recent years, as you saw, appeal counts in 2021 were down over 26% from 2020. Total appeal counts for 2022 are not yet available, as we have not had the payment under protest time period, but equalization appeal counts this spring trended slightly higher from last year. We have not yet received the full 2022 compliance report from PVD, but we do expect. We have not yet received the full 2022 compliance report from PVD, but we do expect to be in substantial compliance once again. Substantial compliance is the best rating the county can receive from the state, and Reno County has been deemed, been deemed substantially compliant by PVD every year since 2016, which is a testament to the work ethic and professionalism of the staff in the appraiser's office. I would also like to take this opportunity to thank the commission for their support of the higher performing organization, the HPO Initiative, that the county administrator is bringing to Reno. I attended the training session back in June with the other directors. The ideas of empowering employees, making decisions via collaboration, freely giving, freely giving trust truly is a mindset, and it does take work to get into that mindset. It's a fundamental change from the traditional workplace mindset of boss and employee. And from my experience, the end result is a workplace is not only happier, but much more productive. This is our opportunity to take Reno County as a whole from good to great. And I do welcome your comments or questions at this time.
Commissioner Sellers?
Well, I appreciate your report, and I read your report. I don't really have any questions about that, but I would be very interested in your perceptions. You came from a much larger department in eastern Kansas to come to Reno County and so forth. I guess I'd like to hear your general perceptions of, of how the appraisers department works, insights that you've brought to the department, anything interesting that you've observed in your short time here?
That's a pretty loaded question, I guess. Yeah, obviously, every county's going to do things differently, and we do have a lot of things that we do similarly. And the, the people that you have in place over there already are, they're good at their jobs. They, for the most part, they've been there for a long time. They're, they're competent, they're confident, and, and they have a good system. They've been in compliance for the last, you know, six years, you know, before my time. So that's all working very well. And so we're not changing a lot of, of procedures or anything like that. What we're trying to do is just find, find better ways to be more efficient, better ways to do things. Yeah, how can we save miles, save gas, save time, save, save efforts, things like that? And that all goes into the HPO stuff as well because it's, it's not just my ideas, right? It's, well, how do you guys think we can do this better? And, and to get that communication flowing.
You're still short one commercial?
We're actually short two. We're short a residential appraiser and a commercial appraiser, yeah.
What's the outlook for filling those positions?
When we first posted, we had several applicants, but we haven't, we haven't had any applicants for a week or two now. And the, the few interviews that we did have, by the time we got back to people, most of them had already found something else that they wanted to pursue. So we, we just haven't had much luck filling that.
And how bad is the fact that you're short two people, hurting the department?
Uh, the, well, the work process is taking, especially the 17% review, we're having to just kind of, it's really a team effort this year, probably more so than, than recent years. With the, the last two years, the state has allowed, has had some exemptions, I guess is the best way to put it, for how we do the 17% review. You know, we couldn't go up to the door and knock and we couldn't physically inspect, things like that, right? But now we're back to, to pre-COVID methods, I guess. And, and so it takes longer, and there's obviously two less of us doing that, right? So it's just a matter of, of coming together as a team and, and having people who don't normally do things, you know, do some field work or do some office work or whatever we need to do to get it done. And we're confident we'll get it done again this year.
Thank you.
Commissioner Hertz?
Very up to date, very thorough, but easy to understand.
Thank you.
Could, while we get you up there at the podium, on farmland valuations, does that whole number come from the state and you just basically are putting it into the system?
Yeah, the state, the state values.
Reno County does not, let's say I've got a quarter of land at X location.
Sure.
That whole valuation comes from the state, you do nothing with it but put it into the form?
Right. So we, we map it for taxing purposes, right? And so that's where the, the square footage or the acreage or whatever it is comes from, but the, the ag land values are set by the state. And yeah, we plug that into the system and it calculates it.
So you are valuing that based on the soil type that the state gives you and the number of acres?
Yes, yes.
So I, I think the answer to my question is that, that you are creating the valuation based on soil type from, soil and irrigation type from the state multiplied by the number of acres?
Right. So we'll, we'll determine things like usage or, or, you know, dry land versus crop, crop land versus irrigated land. We'll determine those things, but all the different categories, the values are set in Topeka, and then we just apply those to the information that we have.
But it's a multiplication of values provided by the state?
Right.
Thank you.
What you're trying to say is basically it's productivity value.
Right. Yep, that's exactly it. That's how it's written in statute.
Mike, appreciate the update. I appreciated the, the report and how it was, it was concentrated into a single page and how you expanded on it in your presentation. That was nice. What's your staff count at now?
We are at 12, 13 if you include me.
Okay. And then you're, you're minus?
Or no, I'm sorry, we're at 11, 12 if you include me.
Okay. And then like full, fully staffed?
Full staff would be 14, yeah.
14, okay. You know, now I've got another loaded question for you. So in your report, I think you're showing kind of increases in sales prices. And, and obviously there's the highest, it's the highest it's been in over four years at 12%, which makes sense this year. I don't, our, our valuations didn't go up 12% though, did they?
Right. So appraisers just in general react to and report on the market, right? We just, we value based on the market conditions that we see. This is, this is good information to have, but it's important to note that we're not valuing based on the sales price increases. It doesn't necessarily mean that everybody's value's going to go up 12% next year. It's just the trend that we're seeing so far, right?
So on one hand, like, it's really touchy to advocate for increased valuation because it just means increased taxes. On the other hand, I think it's, it's, it's just common knowledge that, you know, I think 12% sounds low actually in the current market as to what, what people are getting. I mean, it seems like generally property is getting an extreme premium right now and our valuations are, I, I think they're very conservative, which again, I'm, I guess I'm just making the statement, not necessarily advocating for more aggressive valuation, but it seems like our valuations from a tax perspective are lower than what the market is at the moment.
There's, the appraisal part is really, I don't want to say, I don't want to say complicated. In a way, it's complicated, and you correct me if I'm wrong, because it's been a few years since I've gone through the appraisals course. But depreciation figures into it, comparables figure into it, and that comparables has a whole lot to do with neighborhoods, right?
Right, yeah, absolutely.
And, and while I do agree with you, I think there is some disparity out there versus what I'm actually paying for my property. It could very well be worth quite a bit more in today's market.
Yeah, and it's important to note too that these are countywide averages. So in any given neighborhood, you know, the, the city of Hutch average could be 15% and South Hutch could be 8%. I just, I, I don't have that information in front of me. That's just a, for example, but.
And one area could be minus two and, and some areas could be plus 20.
20, exactly.
Is there a way to use technology to potentially not have to fill those other two staff positions? Are you taking, for example, do you take, do you have to go in homes to do an evaluation? Are you just looking from an exterior?
Yeah, we, we don't typically go in. If somebody specifically asks for a field check or like as part of an appeal or something, then we, you know, we do need to know things like basement finish and, and if it's been updated and, and things like that, right? And, you know, we can do that through listings, through, through photos, through things like that. So a lot of times we don't have to go in and we only do it in special circumstances and with multiple appraisers, you know, for liability reasons and things like that. But the, the killer on that is, is the, the 17%, right? That's what we spend probably half the year doing is, maybe even more, is, is physically driving out. And Reno's a big county, we're what, the third largest county in, in Kansas in terms of land. So, you know, we're, we're going out and we're driving and we're, we're knocking on doors and, and doing that state mandated stuff.
Why do you have to knock on the door?
It's, it's just the way that, um.
So they were?
Because we, we're supposed to physically set, set foot on the property, right? The, the statute is to physically inspect the property. And so especially in the, in the rural areas, we're looking at outbuildings and not just the, not just the house, right? The amount of land that outbuild it, because all of that has value.
I mean, I guess one of my questions would be if, like, could you not have like a vehicle outfitted with, you know, cameras that kind of do what Street View does, Google Street View, where it, you know, you can have a guy that has a driver's license drive all of these locations, and then you have all of the data to inspect at a desk? And, I mean, it seems like satellite imagery would give you all of the outbuildings and all of that, like can?
And we can, we can definitely look into that. For example, Johnson County has, they have the vehicle that drives around and takes the pictures from the Street View, and they contract that out. And I don't remember if it's every year or every other year. But then they also do oblique imagery, which is, you know, flying over and taking pictures of properties from each cardinal direction, right? And they, again, they do that every other year, so they're, but, but that's expensive too. So, but we can definitely look, look into something like that.
Is it more expensive than staff?
That I don't know at this time, yeah. We can.
I mean, I think that would be a, a great point to put in your bi-monthly update to us, just to see whether there's some technology savings there.
If it could be done with technology, because quality and condition play a huge part in that appraisal process.
Right.
And so whether that technology could determine that.
Well, if all you're doing is looking at it and you got a picture, I don't, I don't know, but I'll, I'll leave you to that. Any final questions?
And you know, that's one of the things people probably don't realize is their place hasn't been looked at for five years or four years. That's 17%.
Possibly, yeah. It's, it's once every six years is where they get the 17%. So, yeah.
And no, I'm sure, yeah. Okay. Thank you for your report. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good, good information. Okay. 7D budget discussions? Randy, you want to kick us off?
Sure. Kyle? So last week, the US Commission approved the maximum budget that would go above revenue neutral rate or the possibility of that. And it was discussed that between that time and August 30th, which is the public hearing day, that you could meet, discuss and make changes to the budget in between those times. And so it was requested to be on the agenda this week. So the memo that I put together is pretty much the same, kind of the expenditures by department. I asked a couple departments to be, be here in case there are questions. The sheriff, because he has a big budget, in case there's questions about the sheriff's budget, or automobiles, so Kyle's here from the auto center. With the budget, it's kind of what changes you want in it, and I can answer questions if there are certain areas that you have, want to discuss or certain cuts, changes that you want to see, kind of, this is your opportunity to, I guess I ask the questions and I can explain why the numbers are what they are, if there's some cash balance numbers. I did send, you know, gave you guys a list of options if you wanted to consider that would be one-time options to make changes to.
Randy, before we get started, can you give us two numbers? One is if, if we wanted to basically keep the mill levy neutral, what, how much would we have to cut out of the current presented budget?
None. It's right around 1.3 million.
Okay.
And some change, but 1.3 is the basic number to make.
So I heard Commissioner Sellers say none.
Well, I don't think you answered his question. He said to keep the mill levy neutral, not the budget neutral.
Okay. The mill levy, to keep it flat, the recommended amount already has a small decrease.
Okay.
So it's already flat. That was a recommended amount.
We're starting with a budget that keeps taxes flat?
Yes.
Okay.
No, we keep the mill levy flat, basically, a little under flat.
The revenue neutral, to get to there, that's the taxes levy. To keep that flat, 1.3 million would have to be cut from the flat mill levy. So it's about two mills.
Okay. So from a, a mill levy tax, right, we're, we're at neutral. We're not increasing the mill levy?
Correct.
And then, did you say 1.2?
1.3.
1.3 would give us to, get us to revenue neutral, which means that taxes would not go up from the county's portion?
Total individual revenue from each property would not go up.
Correct. For 2020, the current year, the taxes levied is $25.3 million. The mill, flat mill levy would be $26.67 million levy to get, but the revenue neutral is go back to the $25.3 million.
I, I want to make a comment regarding this revenue neutral rate. The surest way for Reno County or any community or anything to go broke within three years or basically broke within three years or so is to do revenue neutral rate. It just can't happen. Unfortunately, it cannot happen. There are things you can cut, but when our, when our inflation rate is over zero, then you either have to cut services, or you cut projects, or you cut things that people want and desire and need. There's a lot of wants out there, but the basic needs to cover Reno County's governmental obligation is, it sounds great and it looks great, but in reality, revenue neutral cannot happen unless you bankrupt it. Now, I, that's just a flat statement that is true. Now, we can do what we can to increase, but not increase the total revenue as much as we would like, but we have to cover our needs. And in order to cover those needs, revenue neutral rate just will not work. And in order to cover those needs, revenue neutral rate just will not work. And I, anybody to tell me how that can happen when our normal operating expenses keep going up each year?
Well, the first thing, you're making an assumption that we're operating as efficiently as we can. I mean, I think there's two different things going on. One is like, can you reduce expenses just because you can be more efficient? Like, that doesn't necessarily tie to revenue neutral or not. The other is the revenue neutral goal, which I think is mainly just to let people know when their taxes are going to go up and give them a chance to come here and tell us why it shouldn't, but they never do.
Yeah, you're right.
So, but I guess I see it separate. I think, I think you're right. Like, we focus a little too much on the revenue neutral issue when it should be like, can we operate more efficiently? Like, I don't think it's fair to assume that we can't operate more efficiently or cut some costs. But I think they're two separate things.
Yeah, I agree. We can try to look as efficient as we can and see what we actually have to need to make that work.
But if, but if we start with we can't cut anything mentality, I don't think we're.
I didn't say that.
Okay. Then we're on the same page so far.
You bet.
Commissioners, the flaw in what I think your statement a minute ago is that you don't consider balanced carryovers. And I think that in each budget period, you've got the opportunity to look at the carryovers from the previous years. Case in point would be this nine million that we've got in the employment fund, which seems to be in excess. Now, I agree that costs are going to go up and you're going to have to increase things. But I think at the same time, in our budget process, that we should be looking very hard at these carryover amounts and to make sure that those are appropriate. And that's where, to me, I would focus in the budgets that have been presented by Randy is in, in, if we look at our, and I know Randy will make a case that you can't co-mingle these things, but if you look at our unencumbered cash balance for the county as a total, it's 72 million dollars. That's a lot of money carrying over. Now, the general fund doesn't have that much, but the general fund balance is higher than it was the same time last year and is being proposed that we'll have a carryover at the end of this year for that general fund balance. So to me, as I look at these things, is you don't only look at your current expenses, but you look at the cash that you've got to work with. And if it's in excess, which in my terms in office, I've felt like administrators always like more cash than is totally needed to be prudent. And so that's an area that I think in this next month that we should be looking at is these carryovers. I also think that last week that we saw that on this courthouse potential stonework that we might be looking at in the next year or so, they've got a $500,000 placeholder for that and we've just heard that that's not going to be that much. So why, why should we have that in the budget at this point with better knowledge since Randy created the budget? There's other areas. I, I think it might be very difficult to get to revenue neutral, but I think we can get halfway or further there with a good discussion in the next few weeks on areas.
Yeah, and I agree. Just looking at the information that Randy did a great job, I think, in providing us. I'm sitting down here with about $467,000 to take off of this. There are some things we all have to consider and people have to understand is that there are certain, here again, you're going to love this statement, state statutes that require us to do something. And then there are some regarding also in visiting with all the, one of those questions I had, Commissioner Sellers, is when we were down at the Quad County meeting, talking with Sidewick and Butler and Harvey County, is what do they, do they consider an adequate reserve in our general fund? And they all looked at about three months minimum reserve. And so I take that is, maybe that's because each one of them were, but that was, that was not only just county administrators there, that was commissioners also.
And what are we holding today?
We budget, when we do the budget, we budget for closer to six months. That's what we aim for. The, on the expenditure side, it's around 25%.
And that's part of county administration, county and city administration training in college is to keep that much money in the bank, correct?
Well, it's kind of like a personal finance. You want to have reserves for the unknowns. And then if we need to go into debt, bond and interest, the more we have in cash reserves, the higher rating we get for, with credit agencies, with Moody's.
That's one of those things that keeps our bond rate low. Thus, I think, here again, we go back to long-range planning and we're looking at specific projects that will be coming up in the next two or three years. We've got an EMS station over here that has to have something done to it. It's had to have something done to it for three years that I know of. And we've just neglected to do anything about it yet. We've got a potential coming up with court, the way I understand it, now I don't know how it is, but Reno County by rights should have four more judges. Is that one what I'm hearing?
We could have more judges. I'm not sure the, I haven't heard the exact number, but there's been people talking about it.
But we've got that situation to look at in within the courthouse and within building structure. I'm just trying to name some things here and not, that we have to look and begin to plan for on down the road. And then, of course, we're looking also, as we all know, the health department situation and emergency services. And I think that's part of the long-range planning and looking even out here at the, at the shooting ranges. What potential and where can we go and how can we serve the public the best and provide adequate places for people to work? So I hear what you're coming from. We don't want excess. We can't afford excess, but we need to be looking at long-range planning out on our needs, not necessarily as fancy as we want, but just our needs. You know, I think we can get into this and decide where we can do things.
Maybe we can get a couple of quick wins here. How much do you have budgeted currently for the courthouse project that we deferred?
Five hundred thousand.
Did we defer all 500?
Well, that was just for, yes, that was just for the anchoring that was discussed last week. It was originally 700,000. We moved, we cut 500,000 to get to the flat mill levy. There's still 500,000 in the capital improvement fund earmarked for facade anchoring.
So are we going to do that next year?
I think it needs to be done as soon as possible. I'd, you want to get somewhere? I'll cut 200,000 off of it.
I'd cut three.
Cut three?
And then, and maybe we can continue this discussion, but I think back of when we got to that complicated ARPA funding, we all had, all three of us had different ideas of how to approach the same thing. And we all sent Randy a list and then he combined it and we worked from that list. And to me, it was pretty easy to get to consensus. And what I'm wondering is, Ron, I've got more cuts than you do that I think are reasonable cuts to be looking at. I think it would be the most efficient method to have each of us give that list to Randy and let him prepare it somewhat like he did the ARPA thing. Because, you know, I, let's go back to the ARPA. If we wouldn't have had that matrix there, I don't think we would have ever got to a decision.
Not as quick.
Not as quick. And, and I think this is the same thing, but where I've got a number, you've got a number, we don't know what Daniel's number is, but it takes two, two votes to get there and we can get there in an agreement if we have a consolidated information of where we're headed.
Well, I don't, I don't disagree. I, I think it worked well. I think it's a little less black and white and, and I, I mean, we've got a little time here. I mean, I think we could walk through things a little bit so I could hear. I don't think it's as simple as combining things. Or maybe what I should say is I'd like to hear what your, your priorities are and I'd be happy to share mine too. And then, and then we could, I think your suggestions appropriate. Like Randy could take some notes today and get us a matrix. So number one, it sounds like.
Off of this, what he presented else?
I would think that would at least give you what Randy's thoughts are. But number one's courthouse, 500,000, zero to 500,000 is probably. What else? What else do you guys? I'm, I'm 100% on board with cutting the cash balance on, on the employee benefits fund. And that doesn't mean we're cutting employee benefits. If you look at the fund, I think there were, there was 8.2 million dollars or something in revenue and we had 8 million dollars of expenditures. So the cash balance actually went up 200,000. So we're holding 5 million.
And now we got 9 million in it.
I know.
So it went up more than that. Last year was a 5 million and it went up to 9 million this year per Randy's figures.
The budget, the current year's budget's 9.1 million. GFOA recommends keeping at least six months in that, which would be about 4.6 million dollars.
But.
And I think we have 5 million in cash balance.
I hate these budget things because we're talking different numbers. Like, I'm talking a cash number. I think Commissioner Sellers is talking an expenditure number, right? So you have to add.
And then the audit numbers, the year end is a different number because that's just the cash, but we have.
What would be more appropriate is, do you, do you plan on using any of the cash reserve as part of your revenue to offset expenses in the budget?
We budget to try to cover everything.
So, so zero, like it's, it's neutral, meaning there should be 5.2 million dollars left at the end of the year.
At the end of the year, yes.
So if we said, well, we want to reduce that to four, you could, you could, you could budget 1.2 million dollars less in that fund and then we would have 1.2 million dollars.
Be a one-time issue because, yeah, I mean, if we're.
But so what, so you're saying six months, like what's, so six months would be 4 million dollars, right?
We have to have at least 4.6 in reserves. That's mandatory.
That's mandatory?
Yes.
It's recommended by GFOA, Government Finance Officers.
I guess it is.
It's a recommended. And that's because cost of insurance, if we have claims, we're self-insured, if we have a large claim.
Okay. Well, why don't you put that on as a matrix item, you know, recommend six months?
He did. He recommended 200,000 be decreased.
Well, I would take it down to six months, which would be.
This isn't something you cut to six months, is it Randy?
That, that's where on the numbers I gave you, if you cut 200,000 out of that, of what we have right now, because we already had some cuts in there that we had already made. If you make another 200,000, that would get us to about six months estimated. I mean, it's not set in stone because it's estimated, but we may end up better than that if we're not 100% employed with all our positions and health insurance comes in good.
I think it's crazy to hold 5 million dollars and every year we're neutral on the budget. It just sits there. It's a total, like, I understand the like safety factor, but 5 million, when every year we never use it, seems high. But.
Basically revolving, isn't it?
It does. I mean, in the way that the budget works, it gets put back in as a resources available and then we, we don't budget that whole amount to use, but usually because of turnover and insurance costs coming in low sometimes, it pretty much comes back out to where we have it every year. But I could put that in there as a number, you guys can, as a number for you to discuss possible cuts.
But your 200 gets us to six months at full employment.
Yes.
I'd recommend that 200,000 cut. I agree with that. So if I thought there was a way to go under that, be absolutely safe, I would, would go for it, but.
With a lot, kind of like a lot of these with cash balance, you can probably make them one time, but we don't know that we'll build those back up or if we're going to be in trouble in future years. It's, it's an unknown. And that's what, that's why we have it there is to try to protect the county if we have something go wrong, that we do have that money to pay bills.
We can cut all these things. You cut your mill levy clear back for one year.
You won't have the same cuts next year.
That's right.
We'll have to, basically, you won't have the same cuts or you're going to have to increase the next year. And if we're looking at budgeting things and even from the individual homeowner's standpoint, taxpayer standpoint, they can rely on something.
Maybe we should put it towards roads then. Something, something more than just sitting there doing nothing.
You know, an area that the administrator's been very conservative on is increasing revenues in the budget for sales tax increases. And we've seen sales tax increases every year, year on and year out. And we even saw during COVID and so forth. And I just think to not assume that we're going to have an increase with, you guys want to talk about inflation, inflation creates more sales tax.
I, I agree with you. I think we will see, I, I hope we don't see it.
Now, I don't think we should go too far on that, but it's, it's another area which we're under, to me, we're under budgeting revenue.
I, I think that the, that the total effect of inflation will occur sometime next year. We also have food tax decreasing, so I'm not as confident on our sales tax revenue as you are. I hope I'm wrong.
Do you want me to put that on the list of increasing? Is there a range that you're looking?
I think you should.
Well, you suggested in this document, a revenue item of 250,000 would be conservative.
I think on that you should put what your recommendation is.
Okay.
And then maybe what the parameters of the, the range is.
And I'm at the point that I would like to go back and look at our outside agencies. I think some of the increases that were shown on these is 180,000 could be decreased. And, you know, I, with these decreases, I'm not saying the county budget's not going to go up in the future. It's going to go up to provide the services that we have to provide, but I think we can be as, as prudent as possible. But I think we can be as, as prudent as possible on any increases. And I think some of these increases in outside agencies are, are necessary at this point in time.
I thought we, we already said we weren't going to increase.
Not to my knowledge.
Emergency communication.
Explain that one Randy. I think we talked about it's part, it's in the budget if.
This is kind of like self-insurance, kind of think of it that way. Or the employee benefits, if nine one one is fully staffed and they spend a hundred percent of their budget, fifty percent would be the number that the city requested. But over the years, they've never spent that amount. Or I haven't found times when they've spent that full amount. So there's cushion there to where you could cut back to have a flat amount or a decrease. And I think we would still be safe at least for another year. If at some point in the next couple of years, nine one one gets fully staffed, then, then we would need to definitely budget the fifty, the full fifty percent of their costs. But just looking at actuals over the past years, even with the increase in their request, it's more than, if we budget that full amount, it's more than what we would need. And it's in the general fund and other, the other cushions of the general fund could cover if it did. If we cut it and they did have full employment next year, there's other areas we could cover.
Feel comfortable about cutting, cutting that in half or taking fifty thousand off of that?
Is this for operational expenses or? Then they didn't, so they provided a budget and this is what is needed for our half?
But they only bill us for what the actuals, so if they send us, I forget if it's quarterly or monthly, they send us the bills of their actual cost and then we pay that. But it's like any department and even in the county, a lot of times a hundred percent of their budget isn't spent if they have turnover.
What, could we fund the house chamber through our economic development fund?
So we have two funds for economic development. The general fund has a line item for the chamber allocation and for money for economic development incentives. Then we have a fund at the end of the year, the reserve, what's not spent in the economic development incentives line item moves over to the reserve fund. That reserve fund currently has three hundred and fifty thousand. The economic development line item for incentives is four hundred thousand.
I don't think you answered my question.
You could, yeah, you could cut that line item number. But you're talking about a general fund and a, a reserve fund.
Does Sheriff hear about his cars?
I have a question if he'd like to, I have a question which along with you.
I mean, I, it's on the list. If that's why you're here, feel free to give us some feedback.
No, sir. Gentlemen, I, I just wanted to stick around in case you guys had any questions for me on the budget. I know Randy and I and the other sheriff sat down about a month and a half ago and went through line by line, just seeing where we could trim stuff back. But when you talk about contractual services and, and stuff like that, it's, like you mentioned, the economy's just gone up. You know, insurances and, and other stuff that we have, that's out of our control. We have those increases, but I know that, and I don't mean throwing them under the bus, but I think Kyle has kind of been dubbed to look at the fleet services. We usually have a deputy or sergeant that's in charge of doing that as far as going out and putting out bids. We usually look at state contract pricing when it comes to our fleet. And I think our automotive is going to look at that for us next year. And now it'll be up to the director of automotive services.
Um, so there's three hundred and thirty-four dollars in vehicles.
That includes all special equipment.
That's, well, that's just the vehicles. That's all the sheriff's vehicles. Jail may have one for next year, I'm sure detectives. And then health department, youth services and maybe the appraiser. I think those are what included in the three hundred and thirty-four thousand. Probably the majority of that is the sheriff's vehicles.
Are we driving around pieces of junk or?
No, no, we're, we're on a rotation and I, and I know even when I was a patrol captain, I was looking at those cars heavily. We went into a five-year rotation on that stuff. And so we had an extra year to, to it. We're still driving around in better equipment than we had years ago. When we're buying stuff at fifty thousand miles and driving until it had a hundred and sixty thousand miles on it. You know, now we're buying new equipment and, and, you know, we get the warranty work. So it saves us on, on that stuff on the front end of it.
So are we at a, are we at a five or a six-year rotation now?
Last I knew it was at a five-year.
And was that moved from a four?
Yeah. Yes.
Okay. How did that go?
Well, you know, his last budget year or so.
Well, it's going really well. It would go better if the manufacturers weren't having problems delivering the vehicles. So if we add another year to it, we're actually looking probably two more years of driving. Patrol average is twenty-six, twenty-seven thousand miles a year. Part of the issue now is we're having a lot of warranty issues with the new vehicles. So I would hate to cut patrol clear out. I mean, the other departments, it wouldn't be that big of a problem. But sometimes we're having three or four vehicles in, for warranty work at the same time. And it causes a shortage of vehicles. But overall, it's been working well.
I guess that was the thing. I think there's been some erroneous information out there about the vehicles that's, that, that you can help correct. And it's mostly warranty work. It's not the same thing that we have control over with. And you've been able to keep vehicles out on the road for the most part to cover the county. But it's, it's not because they're junk. It's because they're, we have a rotation to keep those productive vehicles now. You can correct me on this anytime I say something wrong and sheriff tend to. But I just, I just think we need to be information wise and correct on this.
Yeah, I don't really know where that information came from, but I'm older than there and been here longer. I remember getting the cars in at ninety thousand miles from state and running them to two hundred and forty thousand.
What, are we gonna, like, do we have any vehicle purchases planned this year?
All purchases are completed. Well, there will be one with ARPA money, two with ARPA money.
And we're, we've received them?
No, they haven't been ordered. The order bank hasn't opened up yet to order these.
Are we planning on paying for them this year? The one for ARPA, just all of them?
They probably won't be paid for this year. They'll go out for bid. And the way it's been going, we'll probably be looking at ten months down the road before we receive them.
So is one way to deal with this, just to push it out because it's going to be pushed out anyways?
Once it's authorized to purchase, we go out, we encumber that expense. And then an auditing issue, once we receive it, then we reverse that encumbrance. So we, it hits our budget on paper and then we adjust that later. So I think some of the ordering, have you received all the vehicles that you ordered for this year?
No.
Cause I think four or five for the sheriff was ordered November, December and one or two come in?
I believe all the patrol SUVs are in. They haven't been delivered yet. The truck, I don't know if we've gotten any more information. I'm probably thinking September, October.
Anytime we order new ones, like for the sheriff, it takes almost a year before we actually receive it. So deferring it, I think it's kind of like Kyle said, we're just pushing it back even further before we can really receive them. On paper, yeah, it pushes it back to a different budget here, but.
Okay.
And I, after being at the Quad County meeting, we're finding out that everybody is having that same problem. And they, other counties have a conglomeration of different vehicles, which I can't imagine Kyle having fifteen different kind of new vehicles out there to supply sources with.
Well, and it sounds like all the manufacturers having the same problems with quality control, I guess.
Used to be you could order them anytime. Now they have a specific date in the year to order them.
And sometimes it's, you order this year for next year's models. And that makes it kind of difficult from the auditing standpoint.
Randy, are there? I guess. Keep hearing everybody say, well, you know, that's not going to solve the problem. You're just going to do a one-time cut and then it's going to come back to bite you. Like, do you have recommendations in here that are ongoing operational costs that we can cut? That would be sustainable?
I don't have that. Cause we, when I meet with each department and go over their budget, we try to make cuts or look at efficiencies, operations of what they can, can do without for their services that they provide. So I don't have anything here. Now, if the commission, with priorities or, or their services that you feel aren't needed, then we could look at areas to cut. But I don't have any listed.
I, I think it would be helpful to look at those. I think it would also be helpful to look at, you know, s- unfilled staffing that has been unfilled for months or even a year or so. It seems like we're doing okay without some of the staff. So can we make a decision on whether we actually need some of these unfilled staff positions?
I think a lot of the positions, they look like they're the same positions that are always unfilled, but it's because of the amount of turnover. Jail deputy would be an example. The sheriff may keep hiring jail deputies, but others leave. So it looks like that same position, but it's, it's the same title, but it's different people. So it'd be hard just to cut the number of jail deputies, for example, because you'd still have that turnover. Does that make sense? I think you need a certain amount to be able to have the various POTS open. And depending on clients that they have in the jail, they have to have a certain staffing level.
Well, we're, we're picking on the sheriff a lot just because he's got one of the bigger budgets. I'm not necessarily advocating for that, but I'd like, I think it would be good to just review all departments and see.
Don't you think they've done that already with regard to setting up this budget? I think that's part of their budgeting plan, in my opinion.
All departments, very hard in all their, their whole budget to see. And I know in the past, there's different departments have made substantial cuts in personnel over time to be more efficient. But to provide the services, we need a certain level of employment.
I, I, I think we've jumped around all this quite a bit. I kind of like Commissioner Sellers' idea that we take a look at what Randy presented us here and we could, we'd make our recommendations and he'd put those together. And then we come back and we just, we talk about them and reasons why. And then if he has any other specific areas that he really thinks we can make some significant or slightly changes in, then present those. But outside of that, I feel pretty confident in, in the methodology to come up with the budgets they've come up with. And that's, I like that idea of just, we, we, we present those to our administrator and he presents, puts those in a form and sends it back to us.
Well, I don't disagree. I think that's where we're headed. We're just talking today, making sure all, all of the items that any one of us wants are included.
And we bring them back August ninth. But I think it's good to talk through them and get some ideas of each one of us, like you said, Daniel.
Yeah, I, I have noticed a lot of misinformation. I would encourage all of the county candidates to talk to Randy a little more. I've seen a lot of really bad information.
Yes.
I mean, I'm just, I mean, I'm going to pick, pick on the sheriff one more time. Like, we have not got the sheriff's budget. If you look at sheriff's budget, it's increased quite a bit in 2022. Do you think your budget's been cut?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you say.
Oh, um, I was just commenting to some of the information that's been out there from, you know, some of the county candidates and like your budget's actually increasing this year. I mean, from everything I'm, I'm seeing here, not being decreased. Are we on the same page there?
You're talking about this year or?
Yeah. Like twenty, twenty twenty-three's recommendation is higher than twenty twenty-two and substantially higher than twenty twenty-one.
There was one year that we took a, a big hit. We cut a lot of money because of COVID based on revenue. And that one year, we went ahead and put that back in our budget to implement that into, back into our funding.
Yeah.
Is that right?
During the COVID, I think that was where during the year, there was about a million dollars in cuts across the county. Cause of expected losses from COVID.
And, and, and I can, I can also tell you that there's, there's one here that, gosh, I think it was, in the past two years, our vehicle insurance rate has increased to twenty-three percent each year or more. So, so I mean, stuff that's out of.
I'm not saying it's out of line. I'm just saying the people that say that we're cutting this, any budget really, detrimentally is not accurate. In fact, you know, the sheriff's budget, I think we've, we've responded by increasing it. Randy's recommended another increase. So, I mean, we're trying on our end. So I, I'm not picking on what you recommended here. I'm just maybe picking on some of the bad information out there.
No, I, I, I'm in full agreement that you, and you guys are absolutely trying to apply diligence to the budget and the community and the citizens. I mean, this is their money. And, and we recognize that and we have to provide a service as well. We've also looked and, and had some discussions on what, where, where else can we go to find insurance? You know, what are those methodologies, especially if it's increasing? I mean, twenty-three percent each year, that's a lot of money. That alone, and like I said, with other contractual services.
Can we, can we self-insure a little bit? Like, it seems like, I'm sure they have claims over here on, I mean, it's a high-risk environment. Do we claim that stuff? Like when somebody, I mean.
I think, I think law enforcement have had increases across the country in their insurance because of just various different difficulties they've had nationwide and some of the publicity that they've had to face, to be honest. So I think, I think the insurance companies have been worried about law enforcement legal.
That's more liability than hazard.
That's what I was, I haven't looked at our policy to see if it's going up because of the liability or because of the hazard. But I guess that's, that's part of my assumption is what might be driving some of that.
And we could look at, I've talked with Bob Vee about the amount of increases we've had. And at least last year, when we were looking for twenty twenty-two. And at least last year, when we were looking for 2022, there wasn't really another company that really could bid for our services based on size. But that may be something to look at this year. There may be additional interest to.
How about deductible? Is it pretty high?
It varies across, uh, depending on what service.
I mean, could we get some advantage there?
We could look at, look at raising that to offset some of the premium cost.
Might be worth looking at.
I mean, it does, just because the different clients I work with in government, this inflation bleeds through because cars cost more than the insurance companies pass the cost for placing it. If there's a claim, then that claim's going to be higher. And so it just all kind of flows down to insurance.
And I know, I know also that we increased our medical, our medical budget. I mean, you know, we get an inmate that, uh, I know one year we had a guy that was, he ended up killing a guy and he's not, he's not going to be released. Then he needed up in art surgery. So.
Yeah.
We, we eat that cost.
Yeah, I get it.
People all the time don't realize what cost we have to pick up at the jail.
Um, I think we've, this is, this is good discussion. Do you have enough direction for another turn?
Yes, I will put together what I gather is I'll put together like a spreadsheet matrix. Here are the cut, possible cuts, the areas. And then you guys, maybe on August 9th, can come back and talk about what areas to cut. I would ask that most of the cuts be maybe for August 30th. If you make them on August 30th during the public hearing, just a reminder, we'll have to have another, we'll have to bring it back in September for adoption to do that. Just because the way the spreadsheet works, you can make cuts and I can tell you an estimate of the mill levy, but there's different calculations that would have to be double-checked by staff to make sure we give you the right mill levy number and total budget. So if you decide to make changes on August 30th, it'll actually be September when you adopt the budget. Not a big deal, just kind of a heads up if you're wanting to make most of the changes and adopt the budget on August 30th. Getting them done maybe by the August 9th, at the August 9th meeting would be the best scenario.
Okay.
Unless we do it on August 23rd. But I think I was going to try to have a line for that, for that meeting, since there's a back, back meeting.
All right.
See no reason to wait until one last minute. I think we could come up with something at least by the 23rd, if not mostly by the 9th.
Does, uh, we, we got two more things I'm trying to get out of here, wrap up no later than 11:30. Does anyone, we need a break for five minutes. We want to keep going.
Keep going.
Okay. Randy, you want to do your report, please?
I have the monthly department reports. I always present that, but, um, any questions on the reports that you received on those monthly ones? For this meeting is health department, human resources, IT, maintenance, public works, solid waste, treasurer, and youth services. And it's just our normal monthly report of activities. All right, any questions? All right. The other thing, last week, we talked about legislative policy and noxious weeds. So KAC does have, I sent that into Jay Hall with KAC, and that is on their agenda. They have the legislative policy meeting via Zoom on this Wednesday at 11:30. If any of you want to join that, or I may try to join in case there's questions about the intent of the request from Reno County to change that statute.
You're, you're on the agenda. Your name is on the agenda.
As, because I submitted it, yes. I, um, other thing is, did mention last week, the town hall for the Water District 101, which is Yoder area. So Lori provided, and I made, I gave each a copy, a kind of a handout that Commissioner Hurst was going to go, um, spread around Yoder. It does mention that Commissioner Hurst will be there. I wanted to double-check our other commissioners also going to be at that meeting.
Uh, I'm going to try to make it.
Good. Is it acceptable for open meeting laws for all of us to go?
Yes, I'll just notify that it's a public meeting because you'll, all of you will, or two or three of you will be in attendance. The press is welcome. Probably good for the press to be there anyways.
Press be there anyway, yeah.
So Commissioner Sellers, were you going to try to?
I'll try to make.
Okay. That's all I had for my report unless there's questions.
Questions for Randy?
No.
Commissioner comments? Randy, you want to go first?
Yeah, I can. Uh, just want to say that we are very lucky to have the NBC here in this week. Starts 28th, 29th, 30th, and 31st. That's the National Baseball Congress. First four days are here. Uh, I might encourage City of Hutchinson to, uh, maybe use a little bit of their arc of money to help update, uh, at least the stands up above for the NBC. Because that's a pretty, pretty neat deal. The name, but games start at noon, very, uh, doesn't cost much to get in. Armed Forces Day are the 29th. Youth Day is the 30th, which is as long as they last, dollar hot dogs. And the 31st is the first responder day. I already mentioned about the quick work that the chamber did. We guarded the potential to have the Kansas Ag Expo here. And, uh, I won't mention that. Uh, last night I attended the 4H livestock sale. And, uh, I'd like to thank the fair committee, the total fair committee, the livestock sale committee, and all the volunteers for their great work in providing quite a youth program here, not only for 4H, but for anyone that wanted to exhibit there, uh, in the open class. That, uh, the scholarships that were given there and the recognition and the leadership development shown by, uh, this organization is, uh, is outstanding. And so I would just like to thank everybody for that. That's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Sellers?
I'd like to give, uh, two compliments to my fellow commissioners. Uh, I thought Commissioner Hurst, your suggestion to start up Hutch to be more personally visible in the county was appropriate. Uh, it seems like all I see in marketing and efforts of, of the whole world these days is social media. And I think there's still a place for knowing the people. And I thought that your comment was well-placed there. And then secondly, Daniel, I thought your thought that, uh, and I'll call Gary on this, but Kurt, uh, you can ask Interface Housing to see what the city can do to help with that project. I think that's important that they show some degree of significant support. I think that's a good suggestion. Those are the only two items I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Sellers. Um, I had one item written down here for me. Um, I wanted to compliment, um, County Attorney Patrick for his work on the tax sale. Um, you know, we got, we got a report, um, this week that we're basically on track and tracking, um, from a sales perspective and, and a dollar perspective from previous years. And so I know that was raised as one of the most difficult, uh, one, you know, annual tasks of, of, of the county attorney. And it seems like he picked it up in stride, which I think is very, very positive. So thank you for your work on that. Um, I'm very happy where we're, where we're at on that, so, thank you.
Well, thank you. And, uh, yeah, and I want to thank Jubilee, Critchfield, getting her in my offices and assistance has been really helpful in keeping things moving. That first couple of months where I was doing it all myself, I don't, I was about to wear out when I got, got her on board, so.
Good.
And I appreciate that.
Yep. I, uh, um, there's an item that, um, so, Patrick, I, I'd like a five-minute executive session to talk to you about, um, your interpretation of, of something.
That would be, I guess, an attorney-client, we could, we'd have to be discussing matters of legal interpretation under attorney-client privilege. It's a little unusual, but I'd happen to do it.
Okay.
Yeah.
So can you restate that?
I guess, I guess you're asking for an executive session until approximately, I guess you might say 11:05, to discuss matters of, uh, legal interpretation that would be privileged under attorney-client. I know you can't possibly repeat what I'm just saying.
No, I, she's.
We're going to discuss matters subject that are, we're going to discuss matters that are subject to attorney-client privilege until 11:05.
Can we have a five-minute break before that?
Okay, we'll do 11:10, uh, and then we'll, we'll be back here at 11:05.
With the county administrator?
Yes. So I, I make that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hurst. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Motion passed three to zero.
We're circling Cindy's duty there if you aren't calling, aren't we?